Like to call the meeting to order. I ask everybody to put your cellphones on silence, please, and stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Paul.
I'm here.
Vice Mayor Hatton.
Here.
Councilmember Whitman.
Here.
Councilmember Starkey.
Here.
Councilmember Lewis. Mr. Lamack.
Here.
Mr. Lewis.
Here.
Mr. Holstein.
Here.
Mr. Weenthal.
Here.
Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you very much. May I have a motion to excuse Mr. Lewis?
Motion to excuse Mr. Lewis.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous, thank you. We start our first meeting of the month with public comments. This will be an opportunity for individuals to come forth and talk about just about anything they want. Except... Let's keep it clean. Except for if it's on the agenda as a public hearing. And when that comes up for a hearing, then you can get up and speak at that time. You have three minutes to address the council. Is there anybody that would like to speak? I see we have a contingent from the Women's Club, so very excited.
Woohoo! Hello, Madam Mayor, Madam Vice Mayor, the rest of the council. Thank you so much for this time. My name is Alexandra Zadak. I'm a representative and the Director of Education for the Davie Women's Club.
And give your address, please.
My address is...
Your Davie resident.
Yeah, oh, yes. We were established in 1922. Where do you live? I live in Davie District 4.
Your address.
Davie 3161. What's your address? My...
Your physical... Where do you live?
I'm about to tell you. 316...
Oh.
I moved, sorry. I just moved. 3120 Southwest 116th Avenue, Davie, Florida.
Good.
33330.
That's how we start each one.
I apologize, I've never done one of these before.
You give your name and address, and then you...
Sorry. Thank you. But thank you, guys, thank you, everybody, for having us. I'm a part of the Davie Women's Club. We have two things that are very quick that we wanted to discuss today. One is since 1986, we have not had our roof replaced, and we have raised enough funds to completely replace the top of the roof, so no more leaks in the Davie Women's Club. That is a big, big deal. Thank you. Yeah, thank you. And the second thing is that on August 16th, the Davie Women's Club will be hosting Timeless Treasures, a marketplace where anyone can sign up through the Davie Cooper City Chamber of Commerce website to have a table, to sell any wares, any special items or things like that, or to promote your business. There's an indoor table and an outdoor table, so whichever one you would like to do, please come by. It's family-friendly. You can come and enjoy the Davie Women's Club and even try one of our famous strawberry shortcakes. And that is all that I have. Thank you so much for your time.
And I have to say, their strawberry shortcakes and that strawberry smoothie are fantastic. You've got to go. And tell us about... Could somebody else come up and speak because of the time? About the Berry Rose Cafe? Or the Strawberry Rose...
Good afternoon. Amy Zadak, do you want my address?
Yes, please.
3161 Southwest 116th Avenue in Davie Majestic Grove. So we just started about a year and a half ago with the help of NSU students and the younger generation of the Davie Women's Club, a Berry Rose Cafe. That is a pop-up cafe, which what happens there is what we just open the doors periodically. We don't have a specific date. We tried that, that was a little difficult to man. But we do have the strawberry shortcakes, and we have those wonderful smoothies that you're talking about, Mayor Paul. And that was created by the youngins, you know, of the club. So we're really excited about that. Maya is an NSU graduate. She's also a mental health counselor now. We're really proud of her, but she's also an artist. And we were exhibiting her art at the club as well, and she made the signs. So we're really excited about that. As you can see, our board is here. So you have Heidi, Peggy, and Sandy. And again, they're all working hard. And of course, our Vice Mayor, Carol Hatton, is also part of the club as part of the board. And so we're really extremely proud of what we're doing. We're working really hard. And anything that we can help with the community, please let us know. The house is open to specifically young girls from NSU that come, and they're not from Florida, so they're a little scared and trying to figure out the community, and we're trying to help them engage.
And the Women's Club is open for rentals, too.
Yes, thank you for that. Yes, we do rent it out for corporate events or weddings. We just had a beautiful wedding there, and so we're really excited about that. Hopefully, her baby shower will be there as well. But we do rent it out every single day, seven days a week, so we are available. So thank you very for that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Nice to see you here. Is there anybody else that would like to speak? Seeing none, I'll close the open speak portion. And we'll move on to presentations. We have a post-state legislative session debriefing, and I'd like to start off with our marvelous Senator Barbara Sharif that would like to speak.
Thank you, Mayor. I have to second the motion that the strawberry shortcake was amazing. I didn't get a chance to try the smoothies because I was on limited calories that day, but that strawberry shortcake is amazing. Good evening, everybody. Mayor Judy Paul, Commissioners and Members of the Public. I'm Senator Dr. Barbara Sharif, and I am the State Senator for District 35, which includes the beautiful town of Davie. And I was pleased that this year I had the opportunity in the 2025-2026 fiscal budget, which was $117.4 billion statewide. Despite the budget cuts, we were able to bring home almost $5 million in funding for Broward County, and there is a $637,500 check here for the town of Davie. It's cashable. It has my signature on it. And this was for our fire rescue, the Davie Fire Rescue Department, for the purchase of a new ambulance. And we know that public safety is critical, and it is so important for us. And so I was, I'm pleased to present you with this check. I don't know how you want to do this. Do you want me to come up there? You want to...
Well, I think for this, we'll come down for a picture with a fire chief.
Okay.
Let's do that.
Wonderful. All right.
We don't do this very often.
Just perk me right up.
Money, money, dollar signs.
There's a fire.
No, it won't bounce. One, I've never written a bounce check in my life, so that's pretty good. That's pretty good odds. And two, it's the state's money, so that's even better. So tonight, I just wanted to bring a brief legislative update because I know you've got to get on with your meeting, and I just wanted to talk about a couple of pieces of legislation that are going to be applicable in terms of your residents in your city. The first is, we passed a tax relief package of $1.3 billion, and that included the sales tax holidays for hurricane supplies, back-to-school items, and outdoor gear. For those of you who are outdoors sportsmen and women, you can get your outdoor gear for tax-free during certain points in the year. And we phased out the commercial lease sales tax, which would be a benefit to small businesses. The other thing that we have done is we've implemented a bill called SB 106, Protection for Vulnerable Adults. This is really applicable to your senior population because, I don't know if you are aware of it, but people are contacting seniors on social media platforms, telling them that they love them, that they are actors, and they're famous actors like Shawn Johnson, and that they're in love with them, and they give them $500,000, $10,000 on gift cards, and they can't get the money back. Publishers clearinghouse lottery, you've won it, and you need to give us $5,000 to deliver it to your house. And people are losing all of their savings because of that. So SB 106 provides the ability for law enforcement to go after the criminals who are exploiting our elders in the same method in which they're exploiting them. Because we were, before, we were not able to go through the social media platforms and get them. Now we can. And so in addition to that, we are allowed to freeze assets during the period of time that they're going after the criminals so that they can't contact them again and drain them financially. And so those two are the bills that I think are going to affect your residents the most. We have a newsletter that we've been sending out to about 90,000 residents in our district, and if you sign up for it, you will get continuous updates on all the bills. But I didn't want to take up much time tonight, and I just want to say it's been an honor and a privilege to represent the town of Davie, and I'm looking forward to another successful session with you. Thank you.
We appreciate it. And also, I mentioned the Senator is a business owner here in Davie. She has her business here, so we appreciate that as well. Thank you very much.
Coming up on six years.
Yeah.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a nice...
Thank you. And is Lauren Jackson here? Yes, she is. She's hiding. So one of our lobbyists from Eric's.
Oh, that's better.
She can give us a little something, too.
Right, and I will try to be brief. I don't know if I'll be as brief as that, but I will try my best to do so. Just want to quickly just touch some highlights of some of the things that happened this past legislative session. But first off, I do want to give a lot of thanks and credit to Senator Sharif. She was one of the hardest-working senators up there this session, even during the extended budget conference. There wasn't a whole lot of legislators that were present during that time, and Senator Sharif was one of the people there with her door open, the lights on. She was roaming the hallways. She was working really, really hard on the town's behalf, and so we really appreciate all the efforts that she put in on behalf of the town. So the legislature did pass a $115 billion budget. This is around $2 billion or maybe more than $2 billion, less than what the FY '25 or '24-25 budget was. So austerity measures and cutting back on spending, which is what they had been signaling that they were wanting to do. On top of that, there was a veto list, line item veto list, that was around $1 billion, and it included over $600 million in member projects. Unfortunately, we did have a couple of projects that did pass in the budget that was passed by the legislature, but were unfortunately included in that veto message. But hopefully, we can try again for the upcoming year. We are expecting them to be just as conservative with the budget, but at the same time, you know, there's always different considerations each year, as we know, and we can always try. But we want to thank Representatives Hillary Cassell and also Representative Gottlieb for helping get those projects into the budget as well, and we appreciate their efforts on behalf of the town as well. They also passed a $1.3 billion tax cut package, and this was the source of the biggest part of the tension during the legislative session. The governor had been calling for aggressive property tax reform. The House really wanted to see a permanent sales tax cut. They had pushed originally for a sales tax cut that would have been, I think, over $5 billion. Then, at the end of session, when they announced an extended session, they ended up going with a $1.5 billion impact. But by the time the tax package actually passed, there wasn't a whole lot of sales tax exemptions in there. There was some sales tax relief, a permanent sales tax relief on disaster supplies, recurring back-to-school holiday, that's a month-long, NASCAR tickets, and some other things like that. It also had some limited property tax relief in there, additional exemptions for Gold Seal Certified childcare facilities, and just some clarification language, really, at the end of the day. But also in there, they passed a study directing the Office of Economic and Demographic Research to do a study on either the elimination or reduction of property taxes. And the idea was that the legislature is going to use that as the basis of forming a constitutional amendment that they will be debating this upcoming session and then will be putting on the ballot for the 2026 legislative session. The House formed a... Oh, I should go back and say that the governor, unfortunately, did veto $1 million in funding that was set aside for EDR to conduct that study because he did not feel that the study was necessary. So I don't know if they're just going to move forward in a limited capacity on that study. But in lieu of that, the House also set up a Select Committee on Property Tax Reform, and Representative Gottlieb is the ranking member of that committee. I know that the town has already met with Representative Gottlieb and also met with Representative Cassell, who also sits on the committee as well, to go over your property tax revenues, what they go towards, and help them get a better picture of what a local budget looks like and your local needs specifically. So that will be an ongoing debate as we go into the next session and throughout the next session. Also, in the implementing bill, I believe everyone is aware that they also passed authorization for the Office of Policy and Budget to conduct reviews of local governments, what we're calling DOGE Florida, and that, I believe everyone is aware, has already, that process has already started. It's a fairly limited process, and I'm sure that the town has already, you know, responded to any inquiries that they've received. But that, they did pass legislative authorization for the Office of Policy and Budget to move forward with those reviews. Then, just a couple of just quick bills, bills that didn't pass, that we were opposed to. There was the Community Redevelopment Agency Bill, and what that was is the House really came out with a very severe proposal that would have prevented CRAs from taking on any new debt, any new projects, prohibited the creation of any new CRAs after a certain date, and it would have gotten rid of language that would have allowed you to vote to extend the CRA. And the Senate worked out a compromise with local governments that was much less severe. Instead, they just focused on better refining what eligible expenditures we can make, and also they just had some accountability language in there, but you could still continue to operate. They recognized that CRAs did a lot of good work and didn't feel the need to be so severe. Just the issue was really what some of these CRAs were spending money on, whether it was parade floats or various things like that that they felt was inappropriate for a CRA to be doing. We had no issues of that sort. And actually, the town of Davie CRA was a great example for me to use when I was in our meetings. So, you know, we appreciate the example that the town set, you know, for the rest of the state, honestly, because it was very helpful in our conversations. Another bill that failed was had to do with accessory dwelling units, and that would have required, instead of encouraged, local governments to permit accessory dwelling units in certain zones. The crux of that issue really came down to a battle between the House and Senate over whether you could allow short-term rentals or not allow short-term rentals for those. So the Senate was okay with allowing local governments to prohibit short-term rentals, but the House was not okay with that, and that's what, at the end of the day, what that battle came down to. As you know, I've been in the vacation rental fight for quite some time, so it was nice that that was the only issue, actually, that we had as related to short-term rentals this session. We do expect in 2027 for that issue to be returning, unfortunately, though I have been put on notice about that. Also, the bills that passed, live local expansion, which was, it was a significant expansion. It wasn't as egregious as what the House originally proposed, but it wasn't as benign as what the Senate was pushing for the whole time. So it is a significant expansion of live local. Another bill that passed was certified recovery residences. This would have originally completely preempted your ordinance, and it would have made it to where you had to administratively approve certain recovery residences. And we were able to fortunately work out a compromise. We worked very, very closely with the League of Cities on this issue, and we were able to work out a compromise. It wasn't a perfect compromise, but it did codify a process for local governments and for recovery residences to have a reasonable accommodation, but it would still be a process. That issue, we are going to be addressing again because of the Sober Homes Task Force. It was imperfect, I would say, not just for local governments, but also for the stakeholders that were proponents of the bill, which is kind of a good thing because it brings us all back to the table at the end of the day. And the Sober Homes Task Force, they are bringing forward another bill that's going to be a complete update and rewrite of the statutes that's hopefully going to address all the concerns for local governments, for the industry, and for individuals in recovery. And it would also apply to other group homes as well, mental health-related group homes, et cetera. So hopefully, it will get everyone in a place where everyone is, it'll get everybody in a much better place than what the current statute provides for. And then sovereign immunity, that bill also failed as well. We were fortunate to have very strong allies in the House, or sorry, in the Senate and in the Governor's Office on this issue, because the House, which they had put us on notice the previous session, as you may recall, really did propose some drastic increases to the sovereign immunity caps. It would have been $1 million, $3 million, up from $200,000, $300,000. By the time they passed the bill, it would have been $500,000, $1.1 million, and then it would have gone up to $600,000, $1.3 million, I believe. So it would have been a drastic increase. But thankfully, the Senate did not want to see such a high increase. They wanted something more along the compromise that we had reached a couple sessions ago that would have been moderate. And the Governor's Office also came out very dead-set against these drastic increases. So he kind of put it on notice. If those were to pass, he would likely veto those. So we were really fortunate that that bill also failed as well. And then, just, oh, sorry, emergencies, SB 180, that was also a really big bill dealing with disaster recovery. There's a lot of provisions that impact local governments in that bill. We were involved with negotiations, and we had the bill in a really good spot, we felt, on the Senate side. At the end of the day, they ended up taking some of the House language that we were hoping they wouldn't. But there may be an opportunity, I believe, to revisit some of that also in the future just because it could have had unintended consequences. Particularly, there's provisions that prohibit local governments from imposing stricter building codes or imposing impact fees and building code fees for post-disaster recovery building. And in some instances, that is being kind of interpreted very broadly by some developers around the state. So there may be a way that we can address it to make it more narrow, but that would be for 180 days after a declaration. And as you all are aware, lately, the storms, there's a declaration for almost all 67 counties just about whether or not your area actually ends up impacted by the storm. You're still under that declaration just to be safe. And so I think there might be an opportunity to revisit that in the future. And with that, I know I'm kind of going a little bit long. There are some other issues that I didn't cover, but I'm more than happy to take any questions or...
We always appreciate your reports. I read them diligently, and we appreciate everything you've done for us. Thank you. Of course, yes.
And again, I thank you so much because every time I go up there, it's always been a pleasure to work with you and Candace. And if I'm frantically coming into your office saying, "When are they going to hear this again?" You know, this bill is supposed to be out there. And you have worked very well with us over the years and with our League of Cities, as you said. So I look forward to working again. Our committees begin again in next week for the League of Cities to adopt our policy statements going forward, and we're hoping to get some of that out of the way with the language so that we can move forward with, just in time for their policy committees to start meeting at Committee Weeks. So I look forward to working with you again. Candace, thank you.
Thank you, Candace.
And we will be up there with you.
Thank you very much. We appreciate your report. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Our next item is the recognition of Town of Davie sponsorship of the 2024 Florida High School Rodeo, Trey Weekly. Welcome.
Thank you. Hi, my name is Trey Weekly, and I want to thank you on behalf of the Florida High School Rodeo Association. Hi, my name is Trey Weekly, and I'd like to thank you on behalf of the Florida High School Rodeo Association for your sponsorship of the 2024-2025 season.
Our pleasure.
And we have this to present to the Town of Davie.
Thank you very much. Mr. Lamack, would you?
Very nice.
It's always great to see the young people that get into rodeo at a young age, and the Wednesday night summer buckle series is the best. If you haven't been to the rodeo arena, it's going on right now, I think. They start at like 2, 3 years old, and they have little competitions, and that's how they get their feet dirty. I'm not going to say wet because that clay gets into their boots. Huh? It's a barbecue set. That means you're going to have to have a barbecue.
Right. You have to get a barbecue. Town barbecue.
Especially Davie barbecue. Sounds beautiful.
Thank you.
Where's Danny? We miss those barbecue days.
Thank you.
Are the chews? Both chews in there.
Moving on. Oh, God. This'll be a few minutes. I'm going to do the tabling. We need to, at the request of Councilmember Lewis, we need to table from the Consent Agenda 20, 21, and 22, the site plan, the flex application, and the plat for the Davie Road ALF. May I have a motion to table that until August 20?
Motion to table number 20, 21, and 22. Do you want them individually, Alan?
No, we can do them together.
That's correct.
Second.
Table till August 20.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Okay, then, under public hearing, again, these were all requested by Councilmember Louis, and we can do all these together as well, but they will require a roll call vote. To table 24, 25, 24 is the land use plan amendment, 25 is the rezoning, 27 is a variance, 28 is a variance, and 29 is a variance, and 30 is a...
It's a barbecue set. That means you're going to have to have a barbecue.
Town barbecue.
Davie barbecue sounds beautiful.
Thank you.
Where's Danny? We miss those barbecue days.
Thank you. Moving on. Oh, God. This will be a few minutes. I'm going to do the tabling. Okay. We need to, at the request of Councilmember Lewis, we need to table from the consent agenda 20, 21, and 22, the site plan, the flex application, and the plat for the Davie Road ALF. May I have a motion to table that until August 20?
Motion to table number 20, 21, and 22. Do you want them individually, Alan?
No, we can do them together.
That's correct.
Okay, table till August 20.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Okay, then, under public hearing, again, these were all requested by Councilmember Louis. And we can do all these together as well, but they will require a roll call vote. To table 24, 25, 24 is the land use plan amendment, 25 is the rezoning, 27 is a variance, 28 is a variance, and 29 is a variance, and 30 is a variance. And these are all to be tabled to August 20.
Motion to table number 24, 25, 27, 28, 29, and 30 to August 20.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Starkey?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hatton?
Yes.
Mayor Paul?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, thank you. All right. All right, on the consent agenda, I'd like to poll 11 and 12. And does anybody else want anything pulled?
No.
Can I have a motion, then, to approve the consent agenda without 11 and 12?
Motion to approve consent agenda without number 11 or 12.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Thank you. I'm just going to take 12 first. I don't want to embarrass her, but number 12 is the selection of our pioneer for this year's pioneer program that will be in Hollywood. And our selection is somebody that's very close to us. She always sits in the back.
I think I see her.
Shirley Pravat has been selected, and we are now going to vote on sending that selection. Hello, Shirley. Sending that selection to the appropriate committee for their vote. May I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve. Second.
Did you second?
I did.
I would have let her. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Thank you. Number 11, I had a request from a resident to pull this. He wanted to make some, a comment or two. So, I am permitting that. Please state your name and address.
Justin Dacey, 8250 Southwest 44th Court.
Did you fill out the form?
Yes.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Town Council. I am here to discuss Agenda Item 11, rodeo sponsorship, and I thank you, Mayor, for moving this to the regular agenda. I believe this council should reject this resolution due to procurement concerns and no demonstrated public interest. This request seeks to allocate 50,000 general fund tax dollars to sponsor a private ticketed rodeo hosted by the Weekly Brothers Davie Pro Rodeo LLC, a for-profit rodeo production company that operates the Bergeron rodeo grounds from the town via resolution to host events. Weekly Brothers maintains operational control over the venue during these event activities. This sponsorship request is an annual recurring request for a private event which no doubt brings business to the town. However, the resolutions recitals fail to justify the expenditure for four reasons. Number one, process problems. There's no codified process for sponsorship requests in the town. This is unlike other municipalities, which have procedures outlining sponsorship criteria. This leaves the council and the public to safeguard public funds. Unlike nonprofit sponsorships, this is a for-profit sponsorship marketing for a longstanding town vendor. Marketing is a contractual service under Florida statutes and town code requiring competitive procurement or a valid exemption. Neither have been provided. Number two, evidence of unconstitutional uses. The Florida Constitution prohibits using tax dollars to aid private corporations without a clear, demonstrated, and measurable public benefit. Public benefit has neither been qualified nor quantified. Referencing event winners' prize money directly in the recital undermines the legitimacy of this sponsorship by signaling a transfer of public funds to private individuals. The recital stating that the town is desirous of renting the rodeo grounds omits an important context. The town already rents the facility under established processes for public and private events, including Weekly Brothers Productions. Additionally, the 2026 budget lists this as rodeo sponsorship marketing, and the town has historically worked with this vendor exclusively for all major rodeo events. It is unclear whether this marketing budget was developed independently or for a particular vendor. Number four, loss of marketing control. Weekly's proposal states that the town will receive $20,000 in advertising value for $50,000 marketing purchase, and Weekly maintains advertising control. The relinquishing of this control could place the town's branding alongside alcohol and gambling cosponsors, contradicting the council's July 23rd concerns about moral turpitude and advertising associated with the town. In closing, and for these reasons, I request the council to reject this resolution based on Article 8 of the Town Code, Chapter 287, 057 Florida statutes, and Chapter 7, Section 10 of the Florida Constitution.
Can we have someone on staff to make a response to that?
Yes, Mayor, I can respond to that. Alan Weinfall, Town Attorney. As you all know, all the items that are on the agenda before you go through me, they are all legally sufficient. I understand the resident's concern, but not only are all the items legally sufficient, but the item in question, item number 11, it meets the procurement code. You know, we have a procurement manual that discusses sponsorships and use of money and is completely legally justified and legally sufficient to be presented before you to vote for or against the item.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Okay. May I have a motion? I mean, we've supported the rodeo for so many years, and it's so much a part of this town, and I appreciate the attorney's input. Yes?
Yeah, and the resident mentioned that the Florida statute, the Florida statute was, I think, also drafted somewhat with the CRA in line as well. So, the Florida statute, when we look at that, it doesn't really, as long as you have a policy in place and discuss the partnership and the benefits, I think that's the way I interpret it. We will still be legal in the way we go forward with this. Is that what you also looked at through the Florida statute?
So, I didn't catch the exact Florida statute he mentioned, but, you know, in approving this, I do review the Florida statutes. I just attended the annual Florida Admissible Attorneys Association seminar. We go over any changes. There was no changes to the statute that prevent this item. You know, I've been here 10 years. We've been doing this way before I've been here, and I am not aware of any state or local statute code ordinances that would prevent the town from voting on this item and approving it.
Mr. Ducey did send us an email. I saw that the mayor was copied, as well as myself, and I don't remember who else, but I know I forwarded it on to Mr. Lemack and Mr. Ducey.
I got the email.
So, you got it, and you had sufficient time, then, to review everything that he has outlined in his email, as well as what he had presented here today. So, you feel it's sufficient, and it is, we are legal to go forward.
Absolutely. If you want, the particular item in question is procurement manual, page 34, subsection 13. We, you are, this is completely legal to do this.
Okay, thank you.
With that, I would then, if you want the motion, I will make a motion to approve number 11.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ducey, though, for at least bringing our attention to some of these issues, and we don't ever shy away from researching it. Thank you.
I forgot to ask you if you wanted to speak when I had that open. But that's good. We're okay. Thank you. So, that takes care of the consent agenda. We'll go on to public hearing. Number 23, code amendment. Mr. Weinfall, will you read the ordinance by title?
Yes, Mayor. In ordinance of the Town of Davie, Florida, amending the following sections of Chapter 12 Land Development Code, Article 3, Use Regulations, Division 2, General Regulations, Article 10, Planning and Development, Division 2, Reszonings, Text Amendments, Special Permits, Variances and Vacations or Abandonment of Rights Away, Providing for Subibility, Providing for Conflict, and Providing for an Effective Date.
Thank you very much. A public, another public hearing on this ordinance will be held on August 20. Is there any member of the public who would like to speak? I know you're interested in this, but if you don't want to speak, that's fine. This is the one, yeah.
I was a little confused, I'm sorry.
Okay. Yeah, this is, this is the repeal of the...
Nicholas Hoffman, 14810, Southwest 20th Street in Davie. I just wanted to say thank you, guys, for giving us the opportunity, holding the workshop the other day. We really appreciate you guys actually listening to us and trying to help us out here and try to go back to the old ways. Just want to say we appreciate everything. Hopefully, we can come to a decent conclusion that we're all not trying to get at each other's necks, and we can all live a happy, peaceful, unflooded West Davie lifestyle.
Very good.
So, thank you, guys.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, seeing none, then I'll close the public hearing. Any comments by council? No. May I have a...
Motion.
Motion, please.
Motion to approve 24 land use amendment, is that correct? 24?
23 code amendment.
I'm sorry. 23 code amendment, pardon me. Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Whitman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hatton?
Yes.
Councilmember Starkey?
Yes.
Mayor Paul?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Now, everything else tabled.
Tabled, tabled, tabled.
So, the only thing else we have is the variance, the Marty variance, number 26. Mr. Weinfall, will you read the resolution by title, please?
Yes, Mayor. A resolution of the Town of Davie, Florida, taking final action on variance application V25-065 Marty, providing for subibility, providing for conflict, and providing for an effective date.
Thank you very much. Is the applicant here? Would you like to?
Yes.
Would you like to speak? This is an open public hearing, so I'm calling up speakers at this point, for or against.
Good evening, City Council. My name is Matt Lines. I'm an attorney. I'm representing the homeowner here.
Can you speak a little more into...
Yeah, sorry, it's a little bit low for me. Sorry about that.
Yeah, thanks.
My name is Matthew Lines. I'm an attorney. I'm here to represent the homeowner, which is Janet Marty. She lives at 13740 Pine Meadow Court in Davie. We're here seeking a variance with respect to a gate that she had installed at the property. This gate was put in there for security features, the aesthetics of it, and in good faith compliance with what she believed to be the applicable regulations at the time. The property is enclosed entirely by a chain link fence and other fencing that fully complies with the zoning and code requirements. And that requirement is that fences be no more than 50% opaque, as I'm sure the council is well aware. The gate at issue is a tiny fraction of the overall fence line, and it's got an anti-theft backing on it, which makes it not opaque. The, this was a replacement of a prior gate that had been permitted and approved in 2016 but had been damaged by a contractor that was installing pavers on the property. Before installing the gate, the homeowner reached out to the Town of Davie, the building department, and asked whether a permit would be required, and she was advised that no permit would be required. No one advised of any issues or even potential issues as to the replacement gate. No one asked about the gate's characteristics or advised her that there be any issues with respect to her replacing this gate. She installed a new gate only to find out that her neighbor was going to object to the gate. The reason she, the reason of the objection is that it doesn't meet the opaqueness requirements for the fence line, which requires that the fence line be 50% or less opaque. The reason for the security is that in 2023, there was an attempted theft of a vehicle out of her driveway. And the way that they gained access, at least in part, was by reaching through the gate and tampering with the motor that operates the gate mechanism. This new gate cost the homeowner more than $9,000 to install. It's a beautiful, brand-new gate. It's secure, it's well-built, and it's very attractive. It enhances the visual appearance of the property and the surrounding properties. The gate is, again, only a small part of the fence. The issue is that the regulations quote, say the following. "Fences located outside the building envelope shall be no more than 50% opaque," end quote. The problem there is that it doesn't say that fences include gates. And in fact, there's a definition in the code for fences that does not include gates as part of a fence. So, this was unclear to the property owner when she installed the gate. She installed it in good faith. Again, she reached out to the applicable authorities to ensure that she would not have any issues. It was only after the fact that this issue was raised. She has 12 letters of no objection. That's every single property owner around, except, I think, for a police officer who said because of the nature of his work, he doesn't, you know, say yes or no about these sorts of things. The only person objecting is a neighbor. Now, this neighbor unfortunately has some, one of an axe to grind with his property owner. He had chopped down some of her landscaping recently and lost a zoning hearing about that and was forced to comply with some, with the requirement that he no longer take those types of actions against her landscaping. And we made a public records request for the communications between this individual and the city, and I have them here. We just got them today. I haven't been able to look through them, but my understanding is there's more than 300 responsive emails to that request. So, this, this neighboring person has been essentially weaponizing this process against this homeowner. All we would like to do, since no one's objecting except for this person that's involved in extraneous matters where there's ill feelings and unfortunately a hostile situation, is just to have this variance granted so we can put this to bed. We do not believe that the regulations prohibit what we're doing here, but because the issue's been raised, we think we should get a variance to clear it up. Thank you.
Is there any staff?
Huh?
Any staff?
There will. Okay. This is the public hearing portion.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Hello, good evening, Mayor Paul and the Commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. My name is Janet Marty. My address is 13740 Pine Meadow Court, Davie, Florida, 33325. I did go through the planning and zoning meeting. During the planning and zoning meeting, I was very concerned because the one sole objection, which is from the neighbor, he was allowed approximately three minutes to speak to other issues that were unrelated to the variance. I do believe that that painted me in a very negative light. For some reason, he was not told not to do these things, and I think that that was an important thing, especially if we want to have due process and we want to speak only to the matter at hand, which is the variance, not opinions, not issues, not anything else other than the variance. I do believe that that swayed the planning and zoning board. That's just my belief. And I'm hoping that that would never happen again to any other resident that's going to bring up a variance, that it would just be funneled and focused to the variance only and that no other extraneous information, which was very, which was false statements, would be allowed. I thank you for your time.
I'm just jotting something down. Yes, sir.
I would like to speak against this. My name is Mike McKee at 13700 Pine Meadow Court in Davie, Florida. And I know she just mentioned that other things were brought up, but that's exactly what they just did. They brought up the trees. We didn't cut down her trees. In fact, the definition of a fence is a tree, a shrub, a head, or any man-made material that's used as a border. They are strictly limited to six feet in the back, four feet in the front. Well, hers are 12 to 15-foot cocoa plums and 25-foot arica palms. We were told by Davie we could cut those. Joe Jimenez showed us how to cut them. They crossed our property line, and that's exactly what we did. So, that's a totally different thing, and that's on appeal. All of this stuff that she said has no facts. I beg everybody, please look at the public records, look at the police report, look at everything else. She has been defaming us for two years. She has destroyed our lives. She has weaponized code enforcement against us with no facts, and it's sad. Now, back to the gate. The gate, and I know a lot about safety. I've been a safety officer for Fortune 500 Company, Transportation Company, as long as I'm in the circle of excellent CEOs for over 20 years. I've been EMT in an ambulance. I worked extra-education trucks. This gate has no hurricane engineering whatsoever. The hinges are constantly having problems. She planted six-foot hedges in the equestrian trail, blocking the view of this gate. That's why we turned it in. She, she built the gate in late '23. And April of '24 is when she planted the hedges. You could not see her driveway or the gate from the sidewalk. And I've got pictures here, if anybody wants to see them, of children that cannot see over that hedge. She did cut it down to about 3, 3 and 1/2 feet, but the kids can't see over, and the cars can't see them. And the way this merges, it's like merging onto an interstate. There's going to be a problem eventually. They cannot see each other until the point of impact. So, that is my main concern with this gate. Davie's very clear. By the way, this is a six-foot tall gate. It is not a four-foot tall gate. It is an extremely heavy gate. It is 100% opaque, and it doesn't follow the Davie ordinances. So, this was a safety issue. This has nothing to do with anything else. She is the one that was on a campaign against us. I've been trying to reach you for a couple months. Hopefully, we can eventually talk about what's happened in code enforcement. There's been some very upsetting things. There's been some very upsetting things. I can assure you, I'm begging anybody to look at the public records. That will clarify all of this, unfortunately, so that's what we have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else in the public likes to speak? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing and ask for a staff report. And then I've got some questions.
Evening, Ma, evening, Mayor and Town Council. David Quigley, planning and zoning manager. So, the, the subject property is about one-point-four acres. It's R-one. The proposed variance is after the fact, it would allow a six-foot-high opaque gate within the front setback.
Speak a little.
Slow down.
Slow down a little bit so I can grasp it all.
Right. Six-foot-high opaque gate within the front setback, and the rural lifestyle regulations limit the height of fences within the front yard to four feet with a maximum opacity of fifty percent. I talked with the applicant before the meeting. I just wanted to clarify. I said at the planning and zoning board meeting that the applicant had not provided any letters of no objection. That was, that was incorrect. In the staff report, there are letters of, of no objection, and there's a map showing where all the different letters came from. They didn't come from all the surrounding property owners, but many of them, so there's at least seven in there. There is no HOA in this situation. Just on the issue of, of the, of the interpretation of the code, I did, I did write a, an email that's in the backup about the rural lifestyle regulations, that they're intended to, to maintain a rural character and a sort of more, more open, open feel. The, the fifty percent, the fifty percent opacity issue and the fact that the, the code speaks not just about opacity, but the types of fences that are, that are permitted, pickets and other types of fences that are open, at least partially open by, by their nature, chain link fence, for example. So, that's all my presentation. I'd be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Okay, so the, the attorney specifically stated that our code did not include gates in, in, in the rural lifestyle.
The, the rural lifestyle regulations are, are broad in nature. It's, it covers two-thirds of the town practically. It does, it does not specifically distinguish between fences and gates, but in, but in my opinion, it doesn't, it doesn't make logical sense that we would have these opacity provisions that apply to fences and not to gates. There, as far as the passerby's are concerned, there, there's no material difference. It wouldn't make sense to allow opaque gates if you're requiring semi-opaque fence material, and particularly choosing the type of fence material. That's part of the code, is not just the opacity. Again, it's the, the materials that are allowed. Only certain materials are allowed.
Okay. And then it was also mentioned that something about being told that they didn't need a permit for this.
That's my question.
And, and I'm going to ask the, the attorney, do you have an email or correspondence that shows that someone on staff did, told you you didn't need a permit?
This is an email dated November eight. Sorry, this, this is Matt Lines again for the property owner. November eight, twenty-twenty-three from Raymond Wright. It's got an email address of wright@davy-florida.gov. Good afternoon. No, you won't need a permit to replace the damaged gates. There was a permit on this fence, sixteen-dash-oh-oh-seven-eight.
So, there was a gate that was damaged.
Right.
But you didn't replace it with the same thing. You put something totally different in.
No, if you notice, do you have the pictures of the before and after?
Yeah, I have the picture right here.
So, it's the same style fence. The only thing that I did different was add a backing after we were victims of the car theft. That's the only difference. And for, for that, so it was the same style fence, same height as was there when we purchased the house in 2022. The only thing that we did was add the backing so that no one can stick their hands through the split rail. Obviously, under the understanding that I was meeting the code as, as stated. I also have pictures of my house. When you leave the house, you can see the entire cul-de-sac from the one-thirty-six. You cannot see my house. There's only eight houses there. It's a cul-de-sac. It's a dead-end street. The only way to see my house is if you park right in front of my house. The other thing about my house, it's very, it's a very strange house because it's a bottlenecked. Everything around it is just surrounded by other people's property. I only have eighteen feet, which is to go in and out, and that's it. That's my gate. You know, more people have, like, the longer type. I don't have that. It's just that little section right there. And when you open up the gate, I can see clear view of everything. I think in the last three years that I've lived there, if I've seen two people on the sidewalk, it has been too much. No one drives down that street, but I have never seen a child on that street, and so I can submit these as pictures?
Mayor. Mayor.
Did you want to, can you read this?
Mayor.
Mayor?
Just a minute.
Yeah.
Mayor, can I ask Mr. Quigley something? Mr. Quigley, is there anything in the code that states something about the backing that's been added to this fence?
Not, not specifically, no. It, it, like I said, it, it governs the, the types of fencing material that's allowed and, and the opacity in certain situations.
Okay, thank you.
The only concern, and I, I do understand this, and I kind of reviewed the, the code too, and we, we've been looking at a lot of the pictures. The, the previous picture of what's on there, when you just had the regular fence that was, I mean, gate that was there, you didn't have the, the little hedge near the sidewalks. And then now with this, now there is a hedge on both sides near the sidewalk, which is, I think, some of the objections of it blocking a view of the sidewalk and people accessing. So, in any case, regardless of how this goes, I, I think that should be removed because it looks like it's part of a swale area that needed to have that, the visual of the sidewalk and people coming out. I do agree with the resident, other resident on that one. I don't have personally, after review, any objections to the, the gate itself. I know that in the code, it seems as though we may have to kind of come up with a better clarification if it's the intent of this council to move forward with some type of cleanup on that, if, if that's their desire of this council, but I don't particularly have a problem with the gate as it's installed. I do believe it complies with the, the code and the way it's interpreted at this point, so I'm just concerned about those hedges now.
I can remove them tomorrow.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah.
Carol.
Who was it that told you you didn't need to get a permit for the new?
That's what I, that's what I just wanted to show you.
On the email.
I know it has a name, but it's not someone from the town.
It is.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't recognize the name.
That's what I wanted to.
It's on the top.
I saw it, I just didn't know it was from the town. Okay, thank you. I got it.
We're in a, this is an interesting situation here.
Yeah.
The planning and zoning board made a decision to deny. We have just been through a lot of things where the P and Z board is concerned that we don't take their advice. So, whatever we do, if we're going to override the P and Z board, we have to have a very good reason and have a very good understanding of it. Now, in the past, I've always said if we made an error, then sometimes we have to eat it, if, if you were told that you didn't need a permit. But it was to repair the old fence, not to put the backing in. So, the, the issue is if you remove the backing, would, would that, it be in compliance except for the height? But since it's, since it's, since that's the same fence that was there originally and permitted originally when they bought the house. Yes.
Mayor, can I clarify one thing, David Quigley? So, the, the original permit for the fence in, in 2016, the plan showed three, three-and-a-half-foot-high fence, but if you look at the, the property appraiser photos that are done every year, clearly, the, before this, this applicant purchased the property, the fence was installed higher or was changed at some point to about a six-foot-high fence. So, the, the height is an issue separately, but also the, the opaqueness. You can take care of both of those things through a variance if you like, but I just wanted to point out that distinction.
But what I'm saying, if, if, even if it was done improperly, that's how they purchased it at that height. So, you're going to hold them to someone else's error? You know, I don't, this is, this is complicated, and I'm, I'm just, I hate to table it, but there were some things that I want to look at a little more, including the code. You know, I don't know if anybody else feels that way.
I, I just want to discuss something. If it, if in looking at the, the larger picture of it, okay, and I know it's for safety concerns that you had and people having physical access of being able to get the, the actual gate and either the motor on one side or the, the locks on the center. In looking at the gate, I mean, if, if the council ends up, maybe we could modify it and just take out, like, the section where the poles are.
Right.
Where they're squirrely, you're, you're going to still have your solid. So, it wouldn't, it wouldn't end up having, you know, on both sides. But in the middle, you would have, and maybe open that back up. It might meet the standard of opaque. I'm just thinking out loud. David or David? With staff, David or David, you see what I'm talking about? If you look at the gate, the bigger gate itself, and you can see the center part here, if they make this part opaque but leave the side and the middle and the side, so it does give that security against people monkeying around with the motor or gaining access to the handles, is that, would that then meet current code?
I still don't think it would meet the, the fence style because, again, the, the style of fence is, is also mentioned in the code, chain, chain link, picket, and so forth. It, it still wouldn't be one of those, one of those types. I don't know how the fence panels are made. I don't know if it would be that easy just to remove parts of it, but I don't, I don't believe it would still comply with code.
Okay. I mean, it's a lovely fence. There's no doubt about it, and clearly, you've put investments in this house.
The problem. I'm sorry. The, the problem, too, is that we have other issues. I mean, it doesn't relate to this. I'm not going to use that as a deciding point, but of these types of fences and gates that are coming before us, and it's, it's hard to see the to approve one and not another and, you know, to be totally fair to everybody, but like I said, I don't like to negotiate at, at a meeting on different things, and I would like to step back a little bit and look at all of this that has been given to us and sit and talk with Mr. Quigley a little more. I mean, I drove by. I, I live in the area, so I'm over on one-hundred-and-forty-fifth, so I know exactly where you are. So, I, I'd like to request that it be tabled until the next meeting, so that I have more time to, to, to look at it, unless you want to go ahead with it now. It's up to you. What? Turn your microphone.
I will, just asking your question.
Okay, yes.
I just have a quick question. I was reading this stuff you gave us, and it talks about it being dangerous and unsafe. I just want, have there been any accidents there at all? Has anybody been hurt? Has there been any accidents reported in the area, right, you know, where they're complaining that they can't see or the vision is limited?
Nothing. There has been no accidents. There's been nothing, and I, I provided pictures that.
No, I'm just, I was just.
The gate, the gates open in, and when they open in, it takes like twenty seconds to open in, twenty, twenty-five seconds. It might not seem like a lot, but it is a lot when you're waiting. So, the gates are very slow-moving. They come in, and then we can see everything, you know, you know. So, and then we pull up and we make sure that the gates close before we drive off. And this is what we've always done, even with the previous gate. This is just, you know.
I just, that was the only question, question I had.
Yeah, I, I didn't see any, any problem. It's a small group of homes
Yeah.
on a cul-de-sac and very little traffic in and out, except for the people that live there and any services, I'm sure, that, that you maintain, but you know, I'm, I'm going to ask somebody to, to table this for me.
I'll table it.
Okay.
Motion to table until next council meeting?
Yeah.
So, I'm hearing a motion to table item twenty-six variance Marty.
Yes, to Marty until the next council meeting.
August twentieth.
August twentieth. Thank you.
I'll second that. All those in favor say aye. Oh, we have better.
Mayor, roll call.
Roll call, roll call, please.
Councilmember Starkey.
Yes.
Mayor Paul.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hatton.
Yes.
Councilmember Whitman.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much, and we'll, we'll meet. I, I need to be very clear on everything. I want to go over everything very carefully. Appreciate that. Thank you. That's it for the public hearing. We have a proclamation for India Independence Day, and I'm sure I'll be spending some time with the community, and I will read it at that point. On the unsafe structure board, I spoke with Mr. Griffin, and he has declined, so that will be a vacant position. Does anybody have any recommendations? I see that Mr. Lavich has said that he would like to be, so we can reappoint him at this point. Would someone like to make a motion to reappoint Mr. Lavich to the unsafe structures board?
Motion to appoint Mr. Lavich to unsafe structures board.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Thank you.
So, now we'll be looking for a master plumber to
Right.
serve on that position.
An attorney, a master plumber.
And a property manager, real estate.
General contractor and a property manager.
Yep. So, anybody out there?
Okey-dokey.
Unsafe structure board, I'm going to tell you, in the past twenty-four years that I've served, I think they met once or twice. So, it's a great resume builder if you're interested.
Um, do we have any board or committee appointments? I don't think so, right? We're all up to date on those? And then, of course, the twentieth is our next council meeting, and already in September, we're up for our first budget hearing. Wow. Where does the time go? Mayor and council member comments? District one, would you like to start?
Thank you, Mayor. Tomorrow, August seventh, there will be a back-to-school backpack giveaway event between one and two at the Davie Pal located at forty-three-hundred Southwest Fifty-seventh Terrace. This Friday, August eighth, the Davie Fire Rescue will host the Teen Safety Night from three-thirty to seven-thirty PM at the Pine Island Multi-Purpose Center. Word to the wise, school starts for all of our students on Monday, August eleventh. Be aware that the school's own cameras will be up and running. Please plan your schedule for having lots of patience. Last but not least, happy birthday to all our August babies. Thank you, Mayor.
Susan?
Yeah, just some quick things, and I think you're a lot of fun. I know the mayor's going to have her chest challenge coming up soon, so everybody should be aware of that, and, you know, they have chair exercises on Tuesdays and Fridays here at the multi-purpose center, as well as yoga and bongo and senior lunches, which I know most of my council appear attends, as well as the veterans. And all these activities are really wonderful for people to attend, and the calendar for our Parks and Rec is pretty, pretty extensive, and I, I would like to see more people attending some of those. The veterans is always well-attended, so that's great. I also want to welcome everybody.
I also want to welcome everybody back from school and summer break. I hope they have a good last weekend shopping for your tax-free school supplies and be careful getting back. We attended Indian Ridge Middle School's anniversary. It was the 30th anniversary of Indian Ridge Middle School, and we were all invited back, and several of us attended that. And it was really nice to see the teachers that were there still or retired that came back for the reunion, that taught my kids or that were there, and we worked together, as well as some of the advisory, PTA advisory council members that I kind of served with back then, too. The new principal there has been there for a couple of years now. He's really doing a great job, and, you know, I want to thank him for that. And our police officer, SRO there, she's doing a great job, too, Amy. So I appreciate that school. It's been really a good school for kids. So that's about it for me.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Pollman.
He's here.
I know you're there. I see you there. Seniors are having a field trip, I believe. Did I read that correctly? They're going to Fort Lauderdale Beach. I don't know when it is, though. I don't remember exactly when it is. Can you fill us in on that real quick? Sorry to bother you. Did he just mean?
He went to go get the date.
He's probably finding out the information.
I didn't even hear what you said. What did you mean?
They're having a field trip for seniors, and I wanted to know what he went.
He went to go get, he went to go get the date.
Oh, that's what I figured after I saw him walk out. Anyway, anyway, we have wonderful things. We have a veterans breakfast. We have a senior luncheon on Fridays. It's $4. It's fantastic. We have a great group of people that work here in the Pine Island Multipurpose Center, so I want them to know I appreciate them. I'm sorry, Jeff. Mr. Pollman.
Oh, sorry. Jeff Pollan, Parks Recreation and Cultural Arts Director. I just wanted to make sure that I gave you the correct information.
That's fine. I should have gotten it myself.
So I wanted to have the flyer in front of me. But yes, we do have two exciting senior field trips coming up. On August 12th, we're going to Fort Lauderdale Beach. There is a $3 transportation fee, but it's a free trip for anybody that wants to join us. If we fill up our first bus, we can add a second one. And then on August 23rd, from 9:30 to 2:00, we'll be going to the Frost Museum of Science down in Miami. That's a $4 bus fee and then a $35 admission fee for anybody that would like to attend. Yep, but so those are the next two senior field trips. So we hope everybody joins us.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you.
You going to go?
Maybe. Put it on the bus. I fit the description now, so. Put it on the bus.
I just wanted to thank everybody, Parks and Rec, for the Take-A-Kid Fishing last Saturday. It was really great, even with all the heat. You got a good shady spot under the trees on the lake. They caught some really big fish. I was really amazed. What was that one? Was it like an 18-inch bass?
Yeah, I caught a couple 19-inch peacock bass. And then I caught a 21-inch gar as well.
Oh, it was really, oh, gar. But the bass was impressive, yeah. But it was really very well done, and staff is absolutely fantastic. I love when Parks and Rec does all these events, the staff is so excited and so involved. They really put their best face forward for the town of Davie, and we wanted to thank the different sponsors and the volunteers that came out to help. It was really great. Just mention that I'll be meeting with the superintendent at Flamingo Elementary on the first day of school. They must have heard me because I used to, I never used to do it because you had to be there when school opened at either 7:30 or 8 o'clock. But this was at 11:00, so.
Nice.
He was going around to different schools, and they were doing it at different times, so that worked into my schedule very well. So it'd be fun to go there. And again, I was also there with Michelle and Susan at Indian Ridge Middle School, and it was really a very nice event and a lot of good memories. I can remember when they were in their portables over in Sunrise, and it was just the sixth grade, and we kind of grew together, and we opened up the school when they built it on Nob Hill. So that was really a nice, a nice event. Want to thank everybody for coming out. Mr. Lemack, do you have anything that you would like to impart upon us?
Yes, Mayor, I do. I have a couple of things to share. First, I want to say that we're all proud to share with you that Brian O'Connor has been named as Procurement Manager of the Year by the Southeast Florida Chapter of the National Institute of Government Purchasing, NIGP. This prestigious award honors public procurement supervisors and program managers who demonstrate outstanding contributions to the advancement of procurement within our organization. Brian continues to exemplify these values through his steadfast dedication to ethical standards, transparency and integrity. Under his leadership, public funds are managed responsibly, contracts are awarded fairly, and procurement practices are consistently met and often exceeded, and all adhere to legal and ethical standards. His work is more about compliance. It's about building trust among government agencies, vendors and the community. Brian's contribution through teaching, mentorship, leadership continue to elevate the procurement profession and inspire excellence throughout the region. Please join us in congratulating Brian this well-deserved recognition. Great job. And Bill, you'll pass that along, right? Please, thank you. All right, my second one, let me start out this way. Hola Ben Diaz. Mi nombre es Rick.
My name is Rick.
With a suggestion from Councilmember Starkey and supported by the Mayor, Vice Mayor and Councilmembers, we offered introductory Spanish classes to our frontline customer service team members. The Human Resources Department and Parks and Recreation Cultural Arts Department collaborated the course once per week for six weeks. Fifteen departments and divisions were represented with a total of 27 participants, including Councilmember Susan Starkey and Councilmember Michelle Whitman. The class focused on basic Spanish conversational language and customer service questions. This knowledge will greatly assist our town in service to our diverse residents, business owners and guests. So gracias and bonus noches.
Buenos noches. Buenos.
Gracias y buenos noches, señor.
Not bonus, buenos.
El jefe.
How's that work?
Spanish with a Boston accent.
It's a start, yes. I tried to get Park the Car, but I couldn't get that into the... That's all I have.
And Mr. Lemack, as we're supposed to fondly call you El Jefe, and that means boss. But it reminds me of some really bad movie.
Mr. Weinfall?
I can't follow that, so I got nothing to add.
Okay, if there are no objections, we're adjourned.